The kid got out, went next door.
Well, it was before the last meeting because I was gonna ask if I was here. So that's six weeks ago. Yeah, I was wondering if there's anywhere near.
I didn't look at the mess. Did you set the record last month?
No.
No.
We were close.
We're close.
You got distracted or something?
Oh, that's it.
You may have asked one too many.
One too many questions, yeah.
You're expected. Seven eleven.
Yeah, we may have asked one question.
I don't know what is.
One might have been one, two. What is the record? Eight minutes.
Twelve minutes.
They did eight minutes.
It kept getting shorter and shorter. Was twelve for a while.
Yeah. This was a little longer than the.
Seven eleven.
How are you? Go down yourself.
Good. Would make sure the township.
Hey Matt, how are you tonight?
Good. We were, we, the main thing we did last time was recommend.
All along. Yeah, it's been a long time.
Treat the township any different than any other. Cindy was very clear.
Really?
It's not getting subdivided.
Partial rezoning within.
Within a parcel.
Yeah.
Half the park. You can do that.
Yeah.
Something there in the corner. That'll help the track. It's working on the beat.
I wish he was on. Yeah, 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 yeah. It was the sketch plan. It was the one over by the.
Evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the, what day is this? June 12th. Meeting of the East Temple Township Planning Commission. I'd invite you to join me in opening the meeting with the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first on the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was on May 8th. Are there any suggested changes, corrections, additions?
Have any changes, so I'll recommend approval of the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Callis, that we approve the minutes of the May 8th meeting as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And I abstain, I was not here.
I abstain as well.
Mr. Palakowski and I, so it's one, two, three, four, zero, two.
Just so.
No, he got one. No.
But we can still.
All right, the action items for the evening, first one is Trading, Thomas Trading Incorporated, a sketch plan. For a review.
Good evening, Cheryl Love with the LA Group. I have Tom Lor with me and also Dawson Lor. So this plan is pretty straightforward. We have met with staff. We did go through zoning and receive a special exception and six variances, which I can speak to. But I wanted Tom to describe what his business is, his need, and why he's having this expansion. And then I'll pick back up from there.
Okay, well, thank you for hearing us tonight. Mm-hmm. So I own Thomas Trading. We buy and sell discount food. Distributed to the Amish Lotso Benonite Discount Stores. We're in the capital of the country for that. It seems like all roads lead to Lancaster when it comes to salvage food. So we buy all across the country and bring products here and then redistribute it. We also support our store, which is located in Red Lion, Pennsylvania. So we are out of space. So it's been a problem as we have grown. We need more space to store our products, which are palletized grocery products. So it's pretty much pallet in, pallet out, and we're just out of space. So we have been leasing space from other warehouse facilities over the last several years. And finally, we're at the point where we want to just bring it all in-house and do it here, which will be a great convenience. So we're excited to be at this point in the process and we're moving along. We've been in business since 2004 and been here in East Temple since 2013. There are about 10 employees and there aren't going to be any significant changes to the business. It's just basically building a box over a box. It's going to be a little bigger and fill it up with groceries. So we have 10 employees and I don't know, I'm open to any questions if you have anything that you would like to ask.
Okay, so their existing building is the area in the front. But there's also a portion that extends back into that gray area. So the current existing facility is about 14,000 square feet or so. The total site is just under an acre, point nine, five, six acres. The entire site existing is impervious, either building paved or some concrete in the rear portion of the current facility. We are in Village Center District. This used to be industrial district and that was rezoned in approximately 2013, 2014, I believe. That created a number of non-conformities and thus, thus, the majority of our variances that we were seeking resulted from the change in zoning. Whereby a lot of his current building was actually non-conforming and out of compliance with the new zoning. So most of the variances we received related to that in some fashion. The Amtrak Railroad is across the north there or the top portion of that plan. On the eastern side, there is a 20-foot wide easement that is with Lassa that parallels up our eastern property line. Goes back to the little square rectangle box you see at the north right or northeast side of our addition back there. There's a number of utilities in there. So we do have some restrictions there up along that eastern edge. That parking lot to the right supports the residential units that are approximately 630 feet away from us on out the roadway there. And I think we do have an easement that allows Thomas Trading to use a portion of that to pull into that parking lot and then back in that right-hand side of the white portion of their building. There is an existing loading dock on there and there's an easement in place that's recorded easement from before that allows them the use of that space there. So that's kind of what's around us. There is, had been another industrial-style building across the way to the left of us. And at one point, the roadway in front of us had previously been Township Road. However, that is under private ownership. We have researched back through deeds. There is a perpetual right to allow the use of that under the current owner that's buried in the deed. So we can also supply that. We did submit that with our, as a additional exhibit during the zoning hearing just to answer some questions that the folks at the zoning hearing board had. But we can again continue to include that with our, our next formal submission of land development plans to the township. As far as the, the uses on the building itself, most of our building will be constructed kind of behind the existing building. There will be one loading dock. It's slightly angled about midpoint where the existing building joins up to the shaded gray building on the right hand or the eastern side. And then there will be two loading docks on the left side. We have done turning movement plans to confirm the proper use of all of those. And to my surprise, we can do that while staying fully in the Thomas Trading property. I was not really expecting that. I thought we may need some easement from the western property beside us. But they actually functions to, to be able to get our vehicles. They pull forward on the private road, they back in and obviously they pull out to the right and, and exit there. So that is, is the way that the truck movements work. They are actually very minimal on trucking. They're expecting maybe one a day. We did provide testimony about that during our zoning hearing as well. So we believe that it's fairly consistent with what we're doing. Right now, there are some storage trailers outside, just simply because they're out of room. One of the conditions of our zoning decision was to make sure all those trailers are removed as we create more space. We will no longer need those to be on-site. So that, you know, that cleans up the, the area there a little bit from a, an aesthetic standpoint as well. We did also receive some zoning relief on the adjacent, the buffer from the Village Residential District is to the right on the plan or to the east. There's extremely heavy vegetation between that parking lot. There are walking trails. There are a number of very mature vegetation between what you can't really see on this plan, but it would be off to the right. And that area goes into some stormwater areas with BMPs. And again, it's 600 something before you get to the next property. When you go back there, street and you turn around to come back, you can't see any of the, even the existing facility there. So obviously, the Landisfield Swimming Pool is in the lower right corner there as well. They anticipate keeping their current employees, 10 employees. We have looked at the ITE parking counts for this as a warehouse-type facility. And with ITE, we're actually right where we should be with the 10 and we can provide some justifications on that. It's labeled on our sketch plan, but we can provide some more justification on the final plan related to parking. And we do have one, one van accessible ADA space there, along with a ramp system that will go up the left side of the building into some of their existing offices that are in, in that existing part of the building. No expansion of sewer, no changes to water, no restroom changes. It's simply a storage space. Pretty straightforward with that. We did get a variance for parking to be within the front yard. We have the dumpster located around on the right-hand side or the eastern side of that building. There are some steps that come out of the building as well on the east that we would look to keep in place. We had run through all the special exception criteria during zoning. We did, so we did receive variances that relate to greater than 50% lock coverage. Variances that allow more than a 5,000-square-foot building in this Village Center District. Obviously, the existing building was well in excess of that as an existing non-conformity. Various to allow parking in the front yard, the variance I spoke to of the visual screen. And a, the variance to allow us to exceed an additional 50% of the existing building that was there as a non-conforming piece. And so we, we slightly exceeded what that 50% would have been. I think that 50% would have been in the 7,000-some square foot range. We were about 1,000 square foot over that with about 8,000 beyond the current footprint. So we did secure all of those through the zoning decision. So those were all in good shape. The new neighbor to the west was in conversations with Thomas Trading and has, has asked, and, and we are showing a, a vegetation strip down the left-hand portion of this that we will plant. Again, this is minimal. It's a five-foot width, but we are fitting in what we can. And I think it's to maybe help to us also better define traffic flow. Right now, it's kind of a free-for-all out there and people just drive everywhere on each other's property without truly realizing who owns what. So maybe Tom can address that a little bit more, but there was a conversation about that. So we, we believe that a, a strip along there would be best. We have honestly worked ahead of schedule. We've worked through stormwater. We have stormwater actually in really good shape. So we would entertain any questions this evening and certainly do our best to answer any. Certainly open to meet with staff again if there are, are other things that are beneficial for us to work through. And beyond that, we're hoping to receive a preliminary plan waiver tonight to allow us to proceed directly to final plan. It's a very compact little site and I guess that's my summary.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the commission? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Hearing none, then the first order of business would, well, the only order of business is to take a vote on the preliminary plan waiver.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of preliminary plan waiver request for the Thomas Trading Incorporated project subject to all staff and engineering review comments.
I'll second. We have a motion from Mr. Datter, seconded by Mr. Boltby, that we recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver request for the Thomas Trading Incorporated project subject to all staff and engineering comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That would be unanimous.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right, the next plan for review is 2930 Old Tree Drive. It's a final plan with some modifications.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Rob Beiler. I'm with Wolson Construction Company. Right now, I am the pre-construction manager that's working on the construction management side. David Bitner from Bitner Engineering is not able to make it tonight. He had another commitment he could not get out of. So I brought with me tonight Brandon Tzak, who's going to be the project manager, as well as Bob Parries from US Boiler. He's our client. So we're here to talk about the US Boiler addition at 2930 Old Tree Drive. It is a 10.5-around acre site. It is Enterprise E zoning district. The current facility is just over 126,000 square feet. The access to the site will remain the same. There are 12, currently 12 dock doors. That's going to go unchanged as well. And then no increase in truck traffic is anticipated. The proposed addition is 45,650. As you can see on the plan, it will be located on the plan west. Looking at total number of employees, currently they have 49 in this facility. Looking at what their actual need is and how they're going to use this building, it's going to be right around plus minus 64. And there are 73 parking spots. Including two visitor spots and two handicap spots. Stormwater, we manage through stormwater biodetention facilities. The disturbance is over an acre, so we are working through MPDS. We had the initial comments back from Langsford County Conservation District about a month ago. We had a follow-up phone call, David Bitner and I did, where they requested we do some additional infiltration testing. That was done about two weeks ago. And then now we just, we're going to send a revision letter back to Langsford County Conservation District next week. That's where we are with that. Any high-level questions before I get into the modifications on the project itself? All right. So going into the modifications.
Excuse me, Rob, before you get started.
Yes.
I just want to let the rest of the commissioners know and, and request that if you have questions, as we go through each one, let's ask them at that point, rather than have to loop back. So.
Okay, no problem. So modification one was the type A buffer. This would be on the, the western property boundary. So right now, there is an existing 20-foot-wide stormwater easement as well as an overhead power line there. So we are asking for that to be, that requirement to be waived. You can see it's pretty tight on that side of the building. Modification number two, sidewalks shall be provided on both sides of the new street with access drives for subdivisions and/or land development located in the urban growth zone area. We're looking to have this a, as a deferral agreement put in place for this modification.
And, and you and your client, you're okay with the deferral as kind of drafted by our client?
Yeah.
By our engineer?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's pretty, pretty standard for what we do.
Number three is proposed subdivision or land development fronts on township, township streets should install curbing sidewalks, pavement, payment widening for the entire length. We are requesting a fee in lieu of for this modification. Number four is the maximum loading ratio for volume control facilities in carst areas with a 3-1 impervious drainage area to infiltration area and a 5-1 total drainage area to infiltration areas. So we got some feedback from ECS Mid-Atlantic, who did our geotechnical report out there. They made the recommendation that as designed, they were okay with everything on that. Moving on to number five, this has to do with the minimum, minimum floor elevation of all structures. There should be two feet over the 100-year water surface elevation with this site and how we had to do the stormwater. When you're at the northeast side, you're about a foot from finished floor up there. That is masonry in that corner. So we're asking for a, a variance there to be within one foot of that finished floor and a little two.
I assume that's because the addition wants to be the same finished floor elevation as the main building, right?
There's going to be doors that come through, pastoral doors. That is correct.
Right.
Number three has to do with the AC, ACM1 is to be used in all areas of carbonate geology and then ACM2 and all other areas. Requesting modification is requirement and it be ACM2 in carbonate areas. Number seven was a non-emergency use of the spillway to convey flows greater than the 50-year design storm. We're seeking a waiver for this requirement, proposing to convey flows less than the 50-year storm through the emergency spillway.
No, I had a question about that. And unfortunately, we don't have the details to back it up at this point. But my question was, is it going to be 47 and a half years or is it going to be four years? Because I think, I think there's kind of a big distinction there, whether you're just missing it by, you know, a couple of years versus it's going to happen every year.
Understood.
So is there any way we can find that out, at least before the, maybe before the supervisors vote on it?
Absolutely. Brandon's making notes here, so we'll get back to you on that. Could we respond back to with that clarification?
Nate.
Send it to me.
Nate.
The number eight has to do with the, the existing asphalt sidewalk that's out there that connects their two facilities on Old Tree Drive. So that is currently asphalt requirement, township requirement is for that to be concrete. We're asking that asphalt sidewalk can stay. And then the last one has to do with, with zoning in the parking, which already hit on earlier with the, the number of employees they're anticipating being in this facility, being 64, and the, the current parking spots being 73.
And you're not adding new, any new ones? Is that correct?
At this point, we're not adding, nothing, nothing on the dock side is being changed at all with the exception of a fence that's going to block the dumpsters.
Because I think if anything, the township would want you to reduce or add, add fewer to reduce the amount of pavement. But if you're not adding any, that's not, not an issue then.
No. And that was all I had. That was the, the eight variances and the one zoning thing I had to talk about.
So there weren't any questions on the modifications as we went? Are there any questions on the final plan in total? Any of the other comments you might have seen from our engineer? Once again, is there anybody in the audience that has any comments or questions?
Quick question for you. Sewer and water, the design of the sewer and water along the front of the building. When I looked at the plan, one of the things I noticed is the sewer main that's in the road doesn't have inverts on it. And the laterals are being redesigned at new locations, which cross a 30-inch water interceptor. Which worries me a little bit that a lateral change might not work until you know what the inverts of the sewer is. Clearance from that 30-inch water interceptor could be a problem.
So I do know that David has been working closely with Lassa. We also had EcoTech go out and do some water hydroexcavation, soft dig in a couple areas. We were able to find some communication lines. We located, obviously, the 30-inch line is in the street. We took the bottom and top of that pipe. All that information was handed back over to David Bitner. So I can't speak to exactly what you're asking, but I do know that we've done it. Because I was out there and performed a survey with EcoTech and then gave him all the information. If there's a specific follow-up question, I'd be happy to get, get a
I would.
Confirmation or.
I would.
Back from David.
I would recommend that you get, show the inverts for the sewer that you're connecting to on the plan so that you can properly ensure the clearance of the sewer lateral to that water.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Further discussion, then we should take action on the modifications first. We have a total of eight of them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications four through eight and conditional approval of modifications one, two, and three, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that. We have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of modifications one, two, and three and conditional approval of modifications four through eight for the 2930 Old Tree Drive Final Land Development Plan, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous as well.
Thank you.
And then the final plan itself.
We had some good comments down there about the sewer laterals. How do we incorporate that into action?
I would, I would suggest that we just recommend with the additional comments, per, per staff and engineer comments.
Do you want the inverted to mark on the, 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 right?
I think, yeah, if you, if you survey the inverts of the sewer, then you'll be able to verify that the lateral works.
With the addition of marking the sewer inverts, is that what it was? Sewer inverts on the drawings.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of final land development plan, subject to staff and engineering comments as well as marking the sewer inverts on the plan.
I'll second. Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Datter, seconded by Mr. Boltby, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for 2930 Old Tree Drive project, subject to staff and engineer comments and the addition of the marking of the sewer inverts on the drawings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That would be unanimous as well. Okay. You're done.
Thanks.
And the third project this evening is 198 Chickies. It's a final plan with some modifications as well.
My name is.
My name is Ryan Trees with RGS Associates here tonight.
Is it Ryan or Brian?
Ryan. Here tonight with Pat Kane, the president of Evercore Facility Management, who's the applicant for the one ninety-eight Chickies Road project. If you recall from our planning commission presentation within, in April, we were here to discuss the sketch plan application as well as a waiver of preliminary planning, which we had gotten approved. We had then processed the final land development plan for one ninety-eight Chickies Road and have been through two reviews from the township engineer. The latest letter, the third letter is dated June seventh.
Excuse me, Ryan. Could you change, change the drawing, please?
Thank you. As that's being pulled up, I will step back real quick. The sketch plan application when rendering, you'll see there, there hasn't been major significant, or major changes. The, the plan is still to propose the, just about a ten thousand square foot building for the purpose of a business contractor and storage use, which is permitted in this zone. It's the enterprise zone. The proposed site also adds parking and paving to the site as well as two subsurface facility management facilities. The, you'll, you'll see the rendering does have an updated dumpster area as well as a slight modification to some pavement line work, but that's the extent of changes from the sketch plan application. So since then, based off of the June seventh, twenty-twenty-four DMA review letter, we feel that the main comments are administrative related and having addressed the majority of the technical comments. So tonight we're asking for conditional approval of three things. The, the plan itself, the seven modification waivers that we have requested, and I will dive into those shortly, as well as the recommended financial security amounts and the fee in lieu of millon overlay that's also outlined in DMA's June seventh escrow and fee in lieu of review letter.
Just to let you know, we don't get involved with the money. We're not going to tell you whether that's a good number or not.
Supervisors will take care of that with you.
As far as the modifications, again, we have seven that we have requested, aside from the approved preliminary plan. The first one is of the Saldau section two sixty-five eight seven, eight-point-seven H two B one, which relates to the buffer planting strip B, which we have gone through the zoning relief for that relieving, the required twenty-foot width to allow ten-foot width in the rear of the property. And as you can see in the rendering, there is a planting strip there that is ten feet. So just to align with the Saldau section, that is why we're asking for that. Number two is also, is the stormwater management ordinance section relating to the maximum loading ratios. Similar to the previous presentation, we are asking for the volume control loading ratios in the karst areas of three to one for the maximum impervious drainage area and five to one for the total drainage area. Now, we also have support from ECS relating to that as far as the current stormwater facility design. The third one is also from the stormwater management ordinance related to cover within public within public street right away and outside and within vehicular loading. We are proposing to, proposing to do a concrete pipe to, that supports a one-foot cover in areas specific to the rear, I'll call it, the eastern part of the site due to elevation relationships for the stormwater facility and tie-ins for the existing discharge point. The fourth waiver is the street and sidewalk ordinance are related to driveways should be designed and constructed in accordance with certain figures of the East Tempe Field Township Technical Specs, which call out a twenty-four-foot wide maximum width for low-volume driveways specifically to the access to the east. We're asking for a modification to allow thirty-five-foot wide for the use of trucks and maneuverability within that space. The fifth waiver is related to the Saldau section, or to Saldau, related to sidewalks being provided on both sides of new streets and access drives for subdivision land development. We're, it also states that sidewalks along newer existing streets and access drives may be reduced to one side under certain circumstances. We're asking for a deferral request that will allow more or less a quarter, once a quarter or project comes through that the board supervisors can have that in effect for the sidewalks at that time. Sixth waiver is related to the street and sidewalk ordinance related, relating to driveways, not classified, classified minimum use, shall have a minimum of one hundred and fifty feet centerline separation from all other streets and driveways. This is in particular to the neighboring property to the north at Seventy Pollen Street, where the existing condition provides one hundred and ten feet separation between those driveways as they currently exist now. So we are asking for that same allowance and modification for that section. The last waiver that we are requesting relates to the street and sidewalk section, further expanding on sidewalk curbing and pavement widening. Meeting all of the requirements of the, that section to be, and we're asking for, again, a deferral of that, those frontage improvements as well. Within the, the conditions outlined in DMA's letter, that also taps into the, the fee in lieu of millon overlay. So I believe that includes the seven waivers, yes, that we are requesting. So I'll open up to any questions for the plan or said modifications.
Can you, can you pull up the plan that would show like the grading and utilities? In the vicinity, along the existing accessway, there's a fence and the water line is shown almost underneath the fence. The separation didn't look adequate there to me. And there doesn't seem to be a large amount of room to move it without impacting the stormwater pipe. So I just point that out that the water line looks like it's under the fence.
And, and just to clarify, you are referring to the
The one.
That's traverse with or parallel to Chickies Road, is that correct?
Yes.
And just, I did send these plans to Memphis Water Authority for their review and input. That is not something that's, has come up, but it's something that is, that we can, it can look into further.
Comes from the east and the fence right along Chickies Road. It's, it's the, the two lines are almost one in the same if you zoom in there.
We can, we can look at adjusting that configuration.
Page LD seven. Hey, is there any other questions? Concerns? Alright, seven waivers to make recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of modification waiver requests one through four and six and conditional approval of modification waivers five and seven, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mr. Callis, that we recommend approval of modifications one through four and number six and conditional approval of modification requests number five and seven for the one ninety-eight Chickies final land development plan, subject to all staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Be six-zero. And then for the final plan itself. It's going to be a challenge if they try to anchor a fence on top of the water line.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the final land development plan for one ninety-eight Chickies. Project, subject to all staff and engineering comments, as well as relocating the fence, so it's not right on top of the water line.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mr. Boltby, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for the one ninety-eight Chickies project, subject to all staff and engineer comments with the additional comment that the fence should be relocated away from the water line. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
So that would be unanimous. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anything under old business? Mr. Sturgis?
No, there isn't.
Any questions or comments on the June project update? Any comments from anybody on Zoom?
There's none.
There is none? Okay.
What's the status of the combined meeting of the Supervisors and Hearing Board Planning Commission?
No, we are working on a date. I can check.
I thought there was, I thought they came back with one. Cindy was at the end of July?
I have it in my phone.
Was it later than that?
I haven't gotten confirmation yet. That's what it looks like it's going to be, the thirty-first at seven.
At seven. Anything else to come before the commission? If not, meeting is adjourned.
This pad isn't working.
What?
The pad isn't working.
Started messing up again?
The whole meeting, I couldn't do anything. We were messing with it before.
When I'm typing, my wrist moves it around.
I replaced it.
You grown potatoes again this year?
I am. I'm doing good. You think you want some?
Yeah, I'll take another box.
Okay, I should have given you, forgotten, given you more because